Board duties.
I will.
And will you strive to make decisions and contributions that are in the best interest of all students of Anderson County School District?
I will.
Having taken your oath, it's my pleasure to recognize you as our student board members. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let me call the August meeting of the Anderson County Board of Education to order. If you'll stand, Mr. Cantrell is going to lead us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask our student board members, Chloe and Brooklyn, to meet me at the podium.
You want me to tell you about them first?
Oh, you want to introduce them? That'd be great. Yeah, I'd love for you to do that.
Sit back down.
Sit back down.
Hey, thank you for allowing me to introduce our new student board members. I'm actually going to start with Anderson County High School student board member. I actually selected this one before I left, so this is no nepotism or anything. Travis didn't pick his own daughter when he was named principal, but Chloe Freeman is a senior at Anderson County High School, where she signs both academically and in extracurricular activities. She maintains a 3.93 GPA, has earned 18 college credit hours, and achieved a 24 on the ACT. At ACHS, Chloe is an active member of the National Honor Society Skills USA and the ACCTC Student Advisory Council. She is also a dedicated four-year member of the varsity cheer program, where she serves as a captain this year. Outside of school, Chloe enjoys reading, spending time with friends, and traveling to support her sister as she plays volleyball at Kennesaw State University. She has been actively involved in tumbling classes for many years, honing the skills that have contributed to our cheerleading success. Looking ahead, Chloe plans to attend a university where she hopes to continue cheering. While she is still exploring her exact career path, she is leaning toward a future in business. So Chloe Freeman from Anderson County High School.
But she has her dad back there with her.
And her dad is finishing his second week as a principal at Anderson County.
He's still smiling.
I got to go over to Clinton High School last week and meet our Clinton High School student board rep, have lunch with her, Mr. Harrell. It was a great meeting getting to know her. Brooklyn Wilkerson is a senior at Clinton High School, where she excels both academically and in leadership, maintaining an impressive 3.98 GPA and earning 21 college credits through run state already. She is also an active member of the National Honor Society DECA and Student Government Association. During the 2024-2025 school year, she further developed her leadership skills through participation in youth leadership in Anderson County. She has achieved a 23 on the ACT and is preparing for an ambitious academic journey. Her future plans include attending Lincoln Memorial University to major in English pre-law with a minor in psychology. Through LMU's 3+3 program, she will complete her first three years at LMU before transferring to the University of Tennessee Knoxville to finish her final three years of study. Brooklyn's ultimate goal is to become a lawyer, combining her passion for service, leadership, and advocacy. Outside of school, Brooklyn values spending quality time with her family. From Clinton High School, Brooklyn Wilkerson. Thank you for allowing me to introduce these exceptional young ladies.
Thank you.
Mr. Fielden Waters, if you'll take over from here. I'm just going to take pictures.
Now, if you'll meet me at the podium, we'll get to the swearing in. You all stand over here. They don't have to see you. They can see you, not me. All righty. So Brooklyn and Chloe, you have been chosen to serve as student board members of the Anderson County Board of Education. So after each of these questions, if you will answer, I will. Will you faithfully represent the students of this district to the best of your ability?
I will.
Will you listen to and share the perspectives of your fellow students seeking to promote fairness, equity, and excellence in education?
I will.
Will you conduct yourself with honesty, respect, and integrity both in and outside of board duties?
I will.
And will you strive to make decisions and contributions that are in the best interest of all students of Anderson County School District?
I will.
Having taken your oath, it's my pleasure to recognize you as our student board members. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want a picture? I don't know. We've given them the night off of giving a report tonight, so, but we will hear you next time. That'll be great. We do have a lot of guests tonight. One I want to introduce, as a privilege of mine, we have Erin Webb, who is here from the Oak Ridge School Board. She is observing this meeting tonight, so as part of her boardsmanship program. So she's doing all that good stuff that we all get to do. So welcome, Erin. And then we have some, lots of other special guests.
Yes, we do. We will be calling our retired teachers up tonight. We are excited, well, I don't know if we're excited, we are grateful of what they've done, but we're not excited about all of them that have left because there's a big hole to fill when you have that much experience that walks out the door. And a lot of them are my age, so it makes me really feel, but tonight we're here to recognize our retired teachers, and we have a plaque, and then we have a hundred dollar gift card from the UTrust account. And so I'm not, I'm just going to start calling them any of you here. We want you to come up and stand. So we'll start out with...
Can Patsy Thurman come up?
Yes, yes, come right on. Come on. And I'm sorry, I meant, Duane, Patsy Thurman, she is with the Retired Teachers Association, and she will be also doing something when we do that, right?
This will be short. I'm Patsy Thurman. I am the president of the Retired Teachers. This is Anderson County and Clinton City. As active teachers, they're separate organizations, but we come together in retirement. And I know when you first retire, you're not eager to see any more teachers, or think about any educational issues. That will wear off, maybe in a year or two, hard cases, maybe three, and we would like you to join the Retired Teachers Association. I'm not sure what your paying in dues as an active teacher, but it's only 65 a year when you're retired, and as young as you are now, you might want to do a lifetime membership with NEA. That's a one-time, $300 cost, and that would cover it forever, and then the yearly dues are only 30. So it's not very much, and it can be deducted from your pension. PCRS is one of the most actuarially sound pensions in the country. I mean, it's there, the money's there, and so that's good to know. We only meet six times a year. We meet, we used to meet in August, but when you're not teaching, we have to be on vacation in August, not in the classroom. So we don't do August, we do September, October, November, December. We skip January, February, and March because it might snow, and then we do April and May. And our first meeting is September 9th, and it is at the home of V.L. and Pat Stonecifer in South Clinton. We call it a picnic, but we don't really go outside. They've got a big screen porch, and we do buddies barbecue. And all these meetings are the second Tuesday of the month at 1:00. And that one is there. Their address is 218 Bingham Drive, and then we're at the community center for the regular meetings. And at Christmas, we go to Apple Blossom, Apple what? Apple Blossom. And that's, then we have a silent auction, and we have a Christmas dinner, and we're raising money for our scholarships, because we give one to a student at each school. And then the April and May, then Christmas goes in May. So we want to invite you to join us. I've got a handout that I can give to when he does his thing, and you have something?
Well, I just want to thank the board for recognizing our public school teachers that have made a career of public education. My name's Duane Emmert. I taught at a high school for 39 years, and I am the president of the Tennessee Retired Teachers Association of Tennessee. So obviously, I want our Anderson County retirees to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. First one is Teresa Whit Wallace. Yes, the next one is Tim Bowe. The next one is Kathy Tony. The next one is Holly Strickland. This one is hard for me to announce because I feel like she's left me, but she's doing a great job, and I really miss her. But this is Susie Smith. The next one is David Rogers. The next one would be Philip Warfield. The next one is Denise Carenshill. All right, the next one is Marvin Carl Ford. I know this one's here. The next one is Omar Breeden. Leonard Ezel. He's probably still working. Amy Horrigan. And Patrick Patterson. Have we missed anybody out here? So we need to figure out how to get all of them. I think we're going to have to... Can you get up there? No. We're going to have to put two... Come on around this way, and we're going to have to come around and make two rows somehow. We're going to put the tall people in the back.
Do you want us to step up on this?
Yes, you can step up on that. You can push that back.
Do you want me to slide this back a little bit?
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
and congratulate you all properly. So...
Congratulations.
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here. Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here. Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
I'm happy you're here.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
Thirty-nine years. I have got my money, it's been a contract that I've got for that.
I'm at so much.
So I'm still.
I don't know.
Yeah, you know, what you're seventy-five. You gotta have a little self-confidence. You gotta have a good mind. Hey, Jerry.
Oh, yeah.
I have a. Well, thirty-nine years, but I'll be telling you, I haven't turned them in here in five years.
It's too close to it. Oh, my God. Yes.
I'm out of the book. I'm out of the book. Yes. I'm out of the book. 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 Oh, yeah. Yeah, I was trying to. I was trying to. Yeah. I was trying to. Yeah. Yeah. I was trying to. 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 I was trying to.
Place where things can get done. So, like I say, I'm not happy with the way this was done. I'm not going to try and point fingers at anybody. It could have been handled in a lot better way. And what I hope is, is that, you know, as a community, that we can rally again, because we're going to need to do it every single year about the expansion of vouchers in the state, and that we're going to have to put a stop to it. And eventually, hopefully, we're going to be able to turn it back so that that money that's going to people who are already sending their kids to private schools, that that money can be put back into our schools to improve education for our students. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, David. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion and second to approve the agenda in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. There's a lot on there, the minutes from the last meeting, the HR report, student services report, field trips, the expenditure report, and then a whole slew of policies for second reading. We heard nothing from those after first reading, so we're assumed those are good for second reading.
One motion for all of it?
Yeah, this, and then the support schedules as well.
Okay, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any items to be removed for discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, we had no executive approval this month. Comments from the chair, just a couple of things. We did have a small group that went to the Tennessee School Board Association Summer Law Institute in July, a couple of weeks ago. This was a two-day event that was filled with lots of pertinent information on all the new-
Should have been a three-day event.
Should have been a three-day event. On the new state laws, there was enough of them. And we had a lot of other workshops, too. So, Mr. Bell and Dr. Parrott, Mr. Downs and I were able to attend that. Yesterday, we did have the opportunity to host the United States Secretary of Education at Grand Oaks Elementary. We were able to show off what we believe is the very best in public education to a secretary who seems to be bent on putting stomach blocks in front of public education at every turn. But we were able to control the message that was sent that day, and I think it went as well as it could have gone. I understand there's people here who want to talk about that tonight, and we won't take a lot of time at this point, but we'll be glad to hear comments from folks in the audience later on in the meeting. That is all I have. We'll move on to the, well, I'll say, at this point, in a regular meeting, you all would get to give your report, but-
You're ready, right?
Right. Don't freak them out. All right, so we will move on to the director's report.
Thank you, Chairman. Our student enrollment right now is fifty-seven oh three. We were funded at fifty-seven oh one last year, so we're up a couple of students. Kindergarten is at four, at three forty-eight, and we've had three hundred and thirty-three withdrawals to date. We always have a lot at the first of the year that move around, and we have them come in. We have fifty-eight students right now enrolled in our online school, Cola. With, one of the things with the decline in enrollment and with the TIFs that were approved through the county, last year's budget, you saw it on our budget sheet, it come in about seven hundred thousand short. And when you think about seven hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. But we were, we were short about three fifty when we started out. We were out of budget about three fifty. So, that's less than a half a percent. So, that's pretty good if we can budget ninety-nine point five percent. The growth, we had tremendous growth in achievement on Monday night. We had Ms. Russell here, and she presented our data for the, for last year, and it is amazing what our staff and students, and staff, students, and our, all of our employees did to raise that achievement. And I just want to publicly thank them for the hard work they did in the success of every student. Few things on capital projects. Claxton School is on time. The K-two wing now has been concreted, and they're starting to block the walls up. The second phase of concrete would be the, it is the special area classrooms and the office complex. And they say in about two weeks, they will have all the foundations poured for that, and they'll start working on doing all the sewer and water and all of those things. So, they still believe that, they call it coming out of the mud, that by the first of November, everything will be out of the mud. It will be, all the concrete will be done. We have had a mess with our soil. As you know, we talked about, we had some soil that was not good, that had tires and debris and everything. They finally got that taken care of. And then we hit a big rock wall, which is a rock wall. If you look at it, it's about thirty foot tall, and they've been busting it out. They have figured it out and got all of it done. But again, we're on track. The bonds have been issued. We have ten million dollars in the bank, will be in there tomorrow, and we will start spending that. The CTE building is about eighty-five to ninety percent complete, and Mr. Myers has said it will be completed by fall break.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
The new scoreboard at Clinton High School, if you get a chance, it is up. I think by the end of the week, they will have power and everything to the new Jumbotron and everything like that, so we know it will be ready for the first home game. If you get a chance to go by CMS, a lot of work was done on that school this summer. They redid all the, they did re, did the locker rooms, they did the, redid the gym floor, they did the front of the gym lobby, really looks good. Did a lot of epoxy work over there, got that done. Anderson County High School Sportsplex, they should start the grade work any day. Our contract manager has been working with the local contractor to get all the sewage, water, and all of those drainage pipes, they need to take care of that. Another thing is the, at CHS this summer, the bleachers were completely redone. They took out all the old stuff and put in all new motors and drives. They replaced any broken seats, and they are, it cost us money, but we, we, with the concerns and the problems we had in Anderson County High School, we didn't want to be two years without bleachers, and these bleachers really and truly are built better than the new ones, and so it was a whole lot cheaper to do those. Lake City Elementary School, if you get a chance to go by there, there's a lot of work done on that with a lot of community support. They repainted the whole gym. The auditorium now is completely empty. It's been repainted, the floors have been redone, and we're waiting on new seats to come in for that. So, there's a lot of work that got done over the summer. I want to thank Bobby and his staff and the extra people. Every summer, we hire fifteen to twenty of our, of our other people, our classified employees, and they come out, and those are some of the best painters and floor waxers that we have. They help, they help offset that, so we don't have to job that out. Another thing that is up and running is our Rave app. That is a safety app in every school. I would use my phone to show it to you, but I'd be afraid he'd call nine-one-one. But it is amazing. We've already had to use it at Anderson County High School. They had a medical emergency, and when it, when that teacher pushes the button, it automatically pinpoints where it's at, who did it. And we were actually in the car, and Mr. Downs called Mr. Freeman, and I think they were at a dead run to that classroom when he called. And so, that's just a way to keep our students safe. It, it reminds everybody, because we know, emergency happens sometimes, okay, did I call this one, did I call this one? Well, it automatically tells us, and you can do two-way communication through the app. It keeps a record of it, so it's a pretty neat thing. The softball field lawsuits have been completely done. I have them filed with the Chancery Court, so it's over and done with.
Yay.
It feels like we've been working on that.
Does that make you happy?
Yay.
Five years.
Yay.
I went by it just now, and it really looks nice.
It's probably about three years past the date, but yeah.
I understand that. Another thing is, we are working on a safety grant that will allow us to update the door locks in all of our schools. As you know, we're a keyless, to the most part, we're a keyless school system. And so, the card readers and everything, and they get used so many times a day, the ones that we got put in almost ten years ago, they started to fail. So, we redid Clinton High School this summer. We're starting on Anderson County High School any day, and then this grant that Mr. Myers, our new safety director took care of, it will allow us to do three more schools. So, we will be putting those together. We were hoping to take some of the parts out of Clinton High School and use to fix at these other schools, but they were just wore out, so didn't have that. The last thing I will go over, summer feeding. Rayanne Owens, she gets, she did, her and her staff did an amazing job this summer doing summer feedings. They did it for four weeks on a Friday. The total fed was sixty-eight thousand, two-hundred and thirty-eight meals. That was delivered to-
Wow.
Great job there, and her partnership with Ethra.
Tim, I just want to say before you leave, the Anderson County High School opening this year with a new principal and two assistants was fantastic. The energy level is through the roof. Travis, you are knocking it out of the park. Everybody is positive, the students are positive. It's been one of the best openings in probably a decade, so well done. I just want to thank you.
Good day. Good day.
All right, we'll move on to action items from the workshop on Monday. First is the financial report.
Okay, on the financial report, we had, we had appropriations one A through one G, and all of these were things that were done over the summer, they're grants. The big one is one C I just want to touch on. That's the teacher bonus that's coming from the state. That's one point two-four-five million dollars, and that will be paid out the last of the month. I think, Marcus, that's on the twenty-ninth, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes. So, if I can have one A through one G.
All right, so a motion to approve appropriations one A through one G.
So, move.
Is there a second?
I'll take it.
Any discussion? All right, so roll call vote.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Gillam-Moders?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Portwood?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
There were no transfers. If you wanted to look at the back of it, it will show you where we were on our overall budget. We were down, like I said, we were down about one point one percent on that, but there were some other funds that we were, we were already three hundred and fifty thousand dollars behind when we started, so it's really not that much behind. Got a good, solid budget.
All right, thank you. Next item, our policies for first reading. We have three for tonight.
First one is graduation requirements. The only change in this one was changed it from the twenty-two credits to the twenty-eight credits. It was just really a typo we needed to change in there.
I make a motion we approve graduation requirements four point six oh five on first reading. Second.
All right, motion and second to approve four point six oh five graduation requirements on first reading. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next one is five point two zero zero.
Separation for practicing teachers. There was one on here that just said that copies of any documentation relayed to the director of schools in reaching the decision to suspend. It means that we have to give an opportunity to give those out to the person we're suspending. They get to see what evidence we had, and I'm thinking that was the only change on that one. Yep.
All right. So, motion approved, five point two oh.
So, move.
Motion we approve.
Motion, is that a second?
That's a second.
All right, there you go. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of separation practices for tenured teachers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. The next item is six point three zero three.
Question for students. So, this is a new law that went into effect that is, that the, anybody that does a search and seizure has to be trained, and the interrogations by police, and we put at principals' request because we have to initiate that, and then it says, we also added here authorize all searches, including the use of animals and metal detectors, because sometimes we will have the drug dogs come into the school, and at CRCS, they use handheld metal detectors every day. Those are the only two added things for that.
Right. All these were discussed Monday night, too, so. So, motion to approve six point three oh three.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and second, approve six point three oh three. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is done. Any other items to come before the board tonight?
We have the call district, maybe?
We do. That is August twenty-sixth. I was going to mention that at the end, but I think everybody's, almost everybody's planning to go, so.
We will be, we will leave here at three-thirty on that date.
Did you reach out to Ann Slade by any chance?
I talked to her dad today and told her about it. I told her we'd be reaching out and give her the information.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
This is a regional gathering of school board members from, from the east district, so we all come together every fall and get an update from our folks in Nashville, so.
That's the twenty-sixth, isn't it?
Yes, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. I think it's Tuesday.
It's just like a week or so.
Yeah, it's coming up. Yeah, it is. All right, last item is persons to be heard on items not listed on the agenda. I think we do have some folks who want to speak tonight about the secretary's visit. I want to make a few comments before we do that and might answer a few questions, but I have to admit, when I first heard about this event, I did not want to attend. I am vehement, and these are my personal comments. This is not, I do not speak for this board, and any other members welcome to speak, too. But I am vehemently opposed to nearly every word that comes out of the secretary's mouth, as well as the education policy of the current administration. But I asked a few questions about the event, and I soon learned that it would be an opportunity for us to show off the good things that were going on in our school system, things that are done in public education, and most specifically, the good things that are being done by the good folks at Grand Oaks Elementary. So, as an elected official, I often have to be in the same room, shake hands with and talk with people that are promoting policies with which I disagree. But the United States was founded on the free exchange of ideas, and I learned a long time ago that one of those biggest parts of free exchange is listening. So, as difficult as it was for me to sit and listen to the secretary, I did. My, being in the same room with her should not be construed as me condoning any of her ideas or ideologies, and I resent any implication that it does. To hate, to divide, to criticize, that's easy. What is difficult is to engage with those with whom you disagree. And that's what we are called to do as elected officials. We represent all the voters in our district. This was not a public event. Had we held a public event during the school day, we'd be criticized for putting our students in danger. The guests were invited. I went as chair of the board. Ms. Beatty went because that was her district. Dr. Parrott went as the director of schools. But mainly, the round table was filled with teachers, staff, parents, and community partners. We announced this event and talked about it here briefly Monday night at our workshop, so, which was a public meeting, so it was not secret, but it was also not a public meeting. Had there been a group of protesters outside or even inside, that's what would have made the news. And instead, our students made the news, our successful programs made the news, and our hard-working teachers made the news. We all jump at an opportunity to promote our public schools, and I believe that's what we were able to do. This event was fairly scripted, but we wrote that script. We wrote every single question that was asked to the panel so that we could highlight and promote certain programs. We controlled the message that went to the secretary. Those to whom specific questions were asked were given those questions in advance, so they had strong, data-filled answers for them. The only thing we didn't write was the secretary's brief comment at the end, and she didn't reveal anything that was surprising to any of us. I think I could have written her statement. We all know what she thinks. I think we all know the agenda of the secretary. She doesn't need to do a fifty-state tour to promote anything that, because we all know what she's promoting. I've heard this event criticized because it was a marketing event for her, and I've heard it criticized because it was a secret event. So, I'm not sure how it could have been both, but I don't believe it was either. The secretary, as I understand it, I understand, went from here to UT, which is another public school. I haven't heard criticism from that event, but I'm sure there probably were some. There is a time for protest, and there is a time for healthy disagreement. And this board has on many occasions made our position on education issues very clear. We have taken the time to protest and to make our opposition and support known on numerous issues. Yesterday, however, was not the time to protest. It was a time to celebrate public education in Anderson County, and I believe that's what we did. So, if there are other board members who want to speak to this issue, we will gladly hear you, and then we'll open the floor to the public. And if you've got some comments, we'll be glad to hear those. Any other board member want to speak to this issue?
I'm just offering a thought. I'm not a politician, and I am an educator. And I realize that there are local politicians that like to have their pictures made with bigger politicians on both sides of the political fence, and that's okay. Obviously, there is impossible, it's an impossible task to support a national agenda at a local level when it relates to public education, because we are different than our brothers and our sisters in other states. It concerns me as the father of a disabled young adult that we are concerning cutting any federal support for individuals with disabilities, because that's the only support that we get. We get none from the state, we get none from the local government. Last year, eight hundred and ninety-three million dollars were donated for adults with disabilities. We spent fifteen billion on our pets, seventy-two billion on our phones, a hundred and twenty billion on guns, and over two hundred billion on porn. So, those aren't political issues, those are cultural issues.
Yes.
And when politics becomes a cultural division issue, you have to think of where the word divide comes from. It's the Proto-Indo-European root word, dis, which became demon, which means to divide. And we've gotten to become a culture and a political society that doesn't try to solve problems, we try to divide communities. And this is a wonderful board of education. This is a wonderful community. I love living here. I love raising my family here, and I hate it when anything divides us, because everybody that serves on this board, everybody that works for this school system, is focused on children first. They are not focused on what's going on in Washington. Truthfully, I doubt that people in Washington could care less what's going on here in Anderson County. We have to protect ourselves. And anybody that criticizes these leaders that participated in an event, it does give you an opportunity to show a community that comes together. We came together as Democrats, Republicans, as independents, and showed what great things we're doing with no resources, from the state level or from the federal level, and we let our children speak for our community. That is real. Somebody that wants to have a photo op, if your county official wants to have a picture made with a professional wrestler, that's great, that's fine. Nothing wrong with that. But at the end of the day, it is the children that speak for us, and we teach the children. And I hate it, Scott, that anybody would say anything negative about you or Dr. Parrott. I know your hearts, I know, more importantly, what you have done. I have seen it in action for a lot of years, and I've never heard a political word come out of either one of your mouths. It's children first, children only. So, well done for both of you. You sat through with somebody you probably wouldn't have had dinner with that you had to have the moment, and we let our ki, I'm very proud of those children at Grand Oaks Elementary School, and those teachers, and those educators, because they presented what was the best of us.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell.
I'd like to say that I'm very proud of what our school system does. I've worked in a school system, and I can say that this board, no matter if you're Democrat or Republican, I would say that when somebody asks me, I'm an elected leader, and I'm learning from other people. You know, when you come on a board, you learn. And I can say this, there's nobody on here, on our board, that doesn't put every student every day. And we care. If I'm running for election, I guess I have friends on both sides of the aisle. And our main concern is, is do we represent our students? I really, truly believe, and I'll say this, I believe it should be a nonpartisan board of education, and I still say it. Especially on a school board. But I will say this, and I'll finalize it, I think that we all care about the students of our county. That's all I have to say.
Any other board members? Do you want, maybe you said me now? Okay. Anybody in the audience want to speak? If you want to speak, come to the podium, state your name and your relationship to Anderson County Schools, and we'll give you three minutes, a little bit of leeway. And I'll remind you, if somebody has already made the point you're going to make, there's no point in making it again. We, we heard it. We heard it. So, the floor is open. Yep, please, right there. You can turn it around this way if you want, or face the audience, either way.
My name's Catherine Scarborough, and I live in Oak Ridge. And I've been an RN for forty-seven years. This year, I'm retiring. Twenty of those years was in school health in Texas, Colorado, and in Oak Ridge, working with kids, going to more IEP meetings than you could shake a stick at. They were sometimes after school, had, you know, worked extra hours to do that. And with that team that worked of teachers and parents and principals and counselors and speech pathologists and hearing and the nurse, the whole team, the coach, maybe, there were modifications made to improve those individual students' learning experiences and help them succeed in life. Those students have grown up to be the people that work on our cars, the people that are bankers, the people that are teachers. My son, for one, had an IEP. He's in flight medicine at the University of Tennessee right now. He's a professional, he's not a student. He's graduated, he's serving, he's, he's a flight nurse with Livestar. He had a IEP. And my grandson, he had an IEP because the school he's in in Harriman didn't have, he was tested out as gifted and talented, and they didn't have a program to address a fifth grader that was gifted and talented. So, they came up with one to improve his education. That's what IEPs do. They help a broad range of students that have mental, physical, and emotional needs, that modifications need to be made, so they can, when they work on our cars, they do a good job. When they're our nurse in the emergency room, they do a good job because they're succeeding in life. That's what we need to stand up for. And this Linda McMahon is destroying it. She is destroying the Department of Education, where all the funding for that came from. She's destroying the futures of these students right now. And this board of education brought her here to Grand Oaks, and it's my understanding that elected officials are supposed to uphold, are supposed to encourage the voters to trust, to have, that the board is supposed to encourage accountability and trust. That didn't happen. This happened under the rug. You guys met, you had a meeting, and this happened, and this big cabinet member, United States cabinet member came here, and people in Anderson County didn't know. And as you say, only a select few. That is not the American democratic way, and I am very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Ashley Craven. I also live in Oak Ridge. My question was, were the parents at Grand Oaks informed that this was going to be happening that day?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I was just curious. I think a lot of the feedback I've heard and kind of have felt myself as a mom is if that was going to be happening at my child's school, I would have liked to have known ahead of time. I do not envy your position of, you know, is, does it create a ruckus to notify people ahead of time? Do we wait and notify afterwards? I don't think anyone here single-handedly tried to hide anything. I don't think anyone here maliciously kept information from anyone. I think it is a good learning opportunity to maybe just seek out feedback from the community for future events. How would they like to be notified, at least the parents of the school, to maybe take that into consideration? But I am glad that, that Grand Oaks did get to, to highlight all of the wonderful things that are happening- to maybe um, take that into consideration. Um, but I am glad that um, that Grand Oaks did get to, to highlight all of the wonderful things that are happening there. I do think the Anderson County schools are absolutely phenomenal, and um, if nothing else, I really hope that that continues to get highlighted on her tour, and that we can show just how amazing our public schools are and how worthy they are of continuing um, to be uplifted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. We appreciate your service on the Oak Ridge School Board. Anyone else?
Yep, yep. If, if I could say just, just a few, a few things, uh, I, the concern that were raised have, they never crossed my mind. Uh, when, when we were, uh, when we were called about this potential coming to Anderson County, it was to talk about literacy because Grand Oaks has some of the best literacy scores in the nation. And when you have a school that is 70% free and reduced lunch, and they outrank a lot of schools that have less than 10%, i- it's a big deal. And so, my objection for that was, when she came, we got to highlight that. We got to spend an hour and a half, almost two hours, talking with her and her staff about the things that we are passionate about, about how that we need federal funding to make sure that these students have what they need. And she, it was not a political on my end, I, but our students, we, we were so proud of our students. We had two students that took her on the tour. They talked about the things that were happening in the classroom. Nobody else except her in that, all of the politicians and everybody else was in the gym. They were part of the round table. They weren't even part of the, uh, when she was reading to students, she'd come into the cap, she'd come into the library, read to a second grade student. Did a tremendous job. Asked for feedback, thanks. Regarding the logistics, we were told the secretary was coming, other state level were, would be there. We had no idea who would be there. Uh, when the lieutenant governor showed up, when the secretary of education, I mean, the commissioner of education showed up, that was the first we knew about it. They, a- and I understand when they had an event about a week ago or sometime later, there was, there was a lot of uh, protest around it and everything. And our main focus, when I started talking to them, we wanna be able to have school. You can come and visit, but we're still gonna have school in Anderson County that day because that's what we're part of. And uh, it was, i- it was a uh, it was a tremendous day. I was so proud of our teachers, our staff. We had community people there. We had teach, we had parents there that had kids, and they talked about what we needed. We had uh, David Coffey there, Anderson, he is with the Heritage Foundation. He was a member of the Senate. He, he, he invented something at Oak Ridge. I don't know what it was, but it was, it was pretty amazing. But anyway, he was, he was there because he gave uh, the literacy award for excellence to that school last year. Uh, that school has been a reward school for the last seven or eight years. They were, they've been an A school for the last two years. Uh, and so, we got to show her that education, public education is not broken. That it doesn't need to be fixed. It just needs to continue with letting us do what we do. And so, uh, at the end though, I was proud. When I got, I, I have received a couple of calls and a couple of emails, uh, and I had no idea it would be that political. And, and here's the thing about it. I, I had a debrief, and anytime we have something big, I had a debrief, and I said, now listen, this hadn't happened in 33 years that I've been here, so we're gonna get ready if it ever happens again because, if you remember, we had an eclipse. And they said, "An eclipse is not gonna happen again for 150 years." Well, in six years, we had another one somehow. I have no idea, so we were ready for it then. So if we have this happen again, I hope she comes back. We, we invited her back to look at our career and technical program because I think we got one of the best career and technical programs in the nation, and how we can help workforce development. Because as you know, in Oak Ridge, there's gonna be over 5,000 jobs that need heavy equipment operators with our nuclear in the next two years. And we wanna be ready for that. We wanna be part of that. So, uh, again, I had no idea it would be that way. Uh, we did. We were the ones that come up with the questions because we wanted to put the questions out there that would give her the information she could use. Uh, Penny Swin was with her. She would, used to be the commissioner of education in Tennessee. She was with her. And they really do. Penny Swin, she cares about kids. I worked with her for five years while she was here. And to be able to tell her that one thing that I'm passionate about is every student needs to eat free. We don't need to mess with that. And I told her, I got to put that in her ear for about five times, and she silently said, "I got it. I got it." A- and, and, and so, being able to do that, you take the political, I, we didn't change her mind. I'm sure that the agenda is set. But I can tell you this, she knows public education. She knows what great public education looks like because it's the first public school she's been in. So, I'm proud of that. I hope that you know that I love this school system. I love everybody in it. I am dead set against vouchers. Uh, I have, from day one, I have fought them. I still fight them. But the bottom line is, they're here, and if we don't have a seat at the table, we can't make, we can't make any changes. So, uh, yesterday, we had a seat at the table, pretty big table, and uh, so I was proud of that. Again, if the way it's handled, we always do better. Listen, I'm not the smartest person in the room, but I got a group set back there. They're smart, and they can help me figure it out, so.
I wanna follow up on one thing, because special ed has been addressed. In 2010, you were assistant director of schools.
Yes.
And we came up with the idea for the Connect Academy because students that were receiving special education services did not graduate with a high school diploma. They got an intended certificate. And I remember sitting at a meeting with you, uh, SuVas Camp, and we came up with the idea for the Connect Academy to get these students to graduate. It was shot down. The director of schools said, "Well, this'll never happen. Nobody's gonna get publicly behind it." We didn't quit the communication. Took us four years. And I remember you meeting with us at Shoney's, who would meet with Shoney's. Everybody would shoot us down. County mayor, shoot us down. Nobody cares about this demographic. Finally, uh, we were able to squeeze $25,000, which is what it took. Now, we have over a 95% graduation rate for our students with disabilities. They go to uh, trade schools. They've graduated from community colleges. But it took over 10, 15 years to get to that point. Once we got a working model, and we're, we're the number one sped system in the state of Tennessee by far. We talk about your, your vocational system all you want. We are the gold standard. For the last 10 years, I sent-
Yeah, but they take our vocational programs.
Well, but for the, the last 10 years, I have asked the state rep for this community to just introduce a bill that I wrote that simply says, "We want funding for every school system in the state for one Connect Academy position, just one." And that position, by doing that, you take all of those students that would've gone on to state welfare roles and federal welfare roles, and you turn them from tax takers into taxpayers. They all work. My son works a full-time job now because of the Connect Academy program. Every year, his response was, "Nobody in Nashville cares. Nobody's ever gonna fund it in this political environment." And I would say, "Sir, we just want to start the conversation." I know it's not gonna go through. I know it's not gonna get the votes. I know it's gonna get up, and I'll have five minutes to speak. Like Scott tells us, and then we sit down. But, if you keep coming back, and you keep coming back, maybe somebody, you change one mind. Maybe you change two. Maybe you change three. Maybe somebody sees it in action, and they put the politics aside, and they look at the reality of what is being created, and that's how real change occurs. And you cannot get frustrated. You cannot slow down. You cannot quit taking. And if people are just gonna sit and throw rocks at the parade, maybe one person in that room, maybe Ms. McMahon, I don't know her. I don't know anything about her, other than she was on TV. Maybe she comes back, and just one little thing that a student said makes something think, or she references at a meeting, and that person comes up with an idea, and 15 years later, one little thing changes. So anytime, you know, if you wanna meet the enemy, meet them head on, shake their hand, and start a conversation. That's the only way we're ever gonna get stuff changed, and hopefully, this new state rep will put our bill up. And you know, we'll probably get three votes, and it'll get shot down, but maybe next time, we get four. And maybe one day, every school system will have a Connect Academy, and all of these students will become what they can be, which is anything they want, because anything is possible.
Thank you, Dale. A lot of credit can be given to you for some of the special ed changes in this state, so. All right, last chance. Anybody else wanna speak? Somebody does.
My dog, sorry.
And then, we'll be, we'll be adjourned. Thank you, everybody.